Got a quorum.
Yes.
All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order. It is 6:01 and this is the City of Montgomery, City Council meeting for official business. With that, the invocation, TJ Wilkerson, would you mind please, recording that this evening?
Lord, we come tonight with humble hearts and bow here. We come thanking you for the opportunity that you've given us, but we come asking you for understanding and wisdom, God and Lord, as we go forward in this endeavor. Watch over all the families, all the people. Teach us how to have patience, Lord, and love. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
All right, with that, let's have the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge to leave the flag. To the republic. To stand.
I pledge allegiance. I know that's a little complex. All right, our first item in business on the agenda is public hearings. Convene into public hearing for the purpose of giving all interested persons the right to appear and be heard regarding the following. Number one, convene into public hearing by the city council acting as a zoning board of adjustment regarding variance requests for a front building line of 25 feet instead of the required 35 feet for the proposed Heritage 3 development along SA 205 west of Louisa Street intersection as submitted by Tito Management. It is 6:03.
This was an item that was originally brought up March 10th, 2020, but we did not have the required number of council members present to act as the Board of Adjustment from council. You know, this is, the properties are on the south frontage of State Highway 105 immediately west of Louisa Street where two houses were demolished a couple of months ago. In lieu of typical developments that placed the parking lot near the street, developer wants to move the parking around to the rear side of the building and locate the parking behind the building. A legal notice that was published for this revised hearing day was posted on the city's website. It was published in The Courier on the 4th and the 11th of May, and 10 certified letters were sent to surrounding property owners with a copy of both legal notice and a map of the subject properties. And I believe that Dave McCorkin has thrown up some imagery of the proposed building. And so this is not a, not for public action as of this time, the, there's a potential action later in the meeting. This is the opportunity for public comment.
Hey, I don't believe that there's any, any public comment. So at this time, we will adjourn the public meeting. It is 6:04. Number two on your agenda, receive final report from the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding rezoning request from R1 Single Family to be for lot 16, area D, Montgomery Townsite, section four, a lot behind 21105 Eva Street, estimated by Tito.
Okay, Planning and Zoning Commission held two public hearings to receive comments on the rezoning request for the vacant lot behind Heritage Place. Attached is their final report of findings and recommendation, the recommendation of the final report of findings and recommendations from the Planning and Zoning Commission. It's up to the city council to receive that report. It's the action item.
I move that we receive the final report of the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding the, the public hearings for the single family rezoning, single family residential for lot 16, area D, Montgomery Townsite, section four, and amending the official zoning ma- map as submitted by Tito Management.
Second.
Okay, it is moving to the second. We, there's been motion on the table to receive the final report from Planning and Zoning Commission regarding the public hearing and rezoning request from R1 Single Family to be commercial for lot 16, area D, Montgomery Townsite, section four, the, and amending official rezoning by Tito Management. Is that your motion, Councilman, Councilwoman Hess?
Yes.
It is debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. It is now open for discussion. Counsel, are you ready for the question?
Yes.
Everybody has their time. All right, wonderful. All those in favor of receiving the final report from the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding the public hearing and rezoning request from R1 Single Family to be commercial for lot 16, area D, Montgomery Townsite, section four, and amending the official rezoning by Tito Management, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will receive the final report from Planning and Zoning regarding the public hearing and rezoning request from R1 Single Family to be commercial for lot 16, area D, Montgomery Townsite, section four, and amending official zoning from Tito Management. Item number three on your agenda, convene into public hearing regarding a rezoning request from R1 Single Family to be commercial for lot 16, area D, Montgomery Townsite, section four, a vacant lot behind 21105 Eva Street, Montgomery, estimated by Tito Management.
This request is for the vacant lot that's behind Heritage Place building nearest to the Valero fueling station and that has Pond Street frontage. The property lies equally in two zoning districts. It's both B Commercial on the eastern half and R1 Single Family Residential on the western half. There's a drawing being put up on the screen to identify the property. The owner has applied to rezone the entire property as B Commercial and construct additional surface parking lot to serve the Heritage Place development. Nine property owners within 200 feet of the affected property were notified by certified letter mailed on May 13th. Legal notice was published in the paper on May 4th and May 11th. The action for the rezoning will occur on the June 9th, city council meeting day. The action on the rezoning must occur more than 30 days after the first date of legal notice publication. So for tonight, we're just here to receive public comments for consideration.
And just to be clear, this is exactly the item that we took before. We just, public, Planning and Zoning has already had their formal decision or recommendation on this, but city council then must have a public hearing as well.
Yes, ma'am. This is the item, this is the other item as the first one was tonight that was held over from March 10th for failing to have enough council members here to act as the Board of Adjustment.
So with that, it's 09, and I'd like to convene into public hearing.
Thank you.
Sorry, this one is Board of Adjustments? Or is this one just the last? No?
No, sorry. This is, this is zoning, so this is just council action. I'm sorry, I was confusing that with the other one.
With that, I hear no public comment. It is 6:09, and we will adjourn into public, adjourn the public meeting, hearing. Moving to the next item agenda on your, next item on the agenda is the visitor and citizens forum. And Secretary Hensley, is, did I hear correctly, there was no comments from any citizen?
That is correct, ma'am.
Great, great, thank you. Okay, then that moves right along to the consent agenda. Item four and five on your agenda. Number four, matters related to the approval of minutes for the regular telephone video conferencing meeting held on May 12th, 2020. And number five, consideration of possible action regarding completion of a one-year warranty period for Lake Creek Village, section three, and release of maintenance bond. Counsel, you can take these together or you can do them separately. What is your pleasure?
I don't have any concerns about either of the issues.
Nor do I.
On that, uh, file inspection, on that file inspection report on that day, did that six twenty or does it supposed to be five twenty?
A number.
It was, so this has been carrying on for a long time. The original inspection was back in October of 18, I believe.
Right.
And the, the main thing that was left was the ditch. We went out there and inspected, I think it's supposed to be five twenty because we went back out last week and confirmed everything off all of my inspector.
Okay, okay, I know, I see, I'll, I'm showing six twenties.
Correct, yeah, everything was done. The only thing that we've been waiting on for a very long time was the roadside ditch, which is what the pictures were on.
Right, but I think TJ is right to say on page 37 of our packet, somebody is basically signing off in advance or?
Right, I'll have a year to it because I think that will clarify. So let me get that changed out and that will be put in the packet.
I move to accept the consent agenda as presented pending the clarification of page 37 for dates.
Correct.
It is moving to the second that we accept the consent agenda as presented pending the clarification of the dates on page 37. This motion is debatable, amendable, and requires majority vote. It is now open for discussion. All those in favor accepting the consent agenda as presented pending clarification on the date for item number five, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will accept the consent agenda as presented pending clarification of the date on number five. All right, moving right along. Consideration of possible action. Number six on the agenda, consideration of possible action on departmental reports. A, city administrator reports in COVID-19 update. Richard?
Okay, thank you this evening. I'm gonna take A through E, but if, in order to help facilitate the communication, if you do have a question for a specific department head, they are on, on the line here, and so they will be able to take that question. Just trying to avoid the back and forth that can lead to communication issues. So I'll just hit those high points following through. Start with, we're starting to see activity and life beginning to resume a bit towards normal in the city. Sip and stroll has resumed starting two weeks ago. They were spacing different areas out and were generally observing, you know, the term that we've all gotten to know quite well, social distancing. Montgomery Mudbugs Festival has not yet had a time to reschedule. I've talked to the promoter and, you know, he's hoping, you know, once allowed to move that festival fairly quickly, within two weeks of events being allowed. The question is, what kind of timeline will he be able to work on? And we don't have answers to that question. And we have a meeting this week. The police chief and I will be meeting with the chamber to discuss, you know, how to conduct a Freedom Fest event, you know, coming up. So, so everyone's trying to put some of these things back to normal. There's obviously challenges associated with those. None of these three are actually specifically city events, but they all would occur within the city. And so I have been, gotten questions on some of those. I wanted to go ahead and make sure, getting that information out here in this forum. With regards to COVID-19, the city hall has reopened, you know, for the public coming in, we're asking to limit numbers in the lobby area, you know, and, you know, we, so far, we haven't had a crowd begin to build up here, but we would ask them to wait out in the front if necessary. And we have hand sanitizer available to the public. As soon as they walk in the door, that is, you know, right in the front there. And we're trying to direct the court traffic in the left door, the utility traffic, permitting traffic in the right door, trying to, just as you know, those are double doors, so they're already pretty close together, but just trying to do our best to kind of move traffic along while it's there. April businesses do not file their sales tax reports until the end of May, you know, so there's a lot of information there about April's business activity that we won't have available to us until next month. But I have been doing, you know, some analysis and looking through, you know, our list of providers for sales tax. And one thing I think that has, is working to the city's favor at the moment is that we have a relative lack of large retail stores that some of the other cities in Montgomery have. And, you know, so those shutting down and being large sales tax providers in those areas, I think, put them at more of a detriment than we're seeing in Montgomery. You know, it's like, I originally felt like, I, we talked to council previously, that I was expecting an average 30% sales tax reduction for the rest of the fiscal year. I think it's going to be, you know, definitely under that number. Until we have actual data, it's hard for me to do more than just, you know, offer conjecture on the item. But in looking in the actual previous data, six of our top seven generating companies in the city account for over 55% of our sales tax collections. And from the looks of their activities that I could identify and the types of stores, I think they're likely to be at normal or greater in their April sales than previously. Those are places like Kroger's, Berkshire Brothers, McCoy's, Jim's Hardware. You know, some of the remaining generating companies are also less likely to show a significant decrease and may even show an increase. Areas such as online shopping, cell phone companies, internet services, you know, those, those are probably pretty resistant. Those are services a lot of people relied on, you know, during the shutdown period. Local retail shops that were closed and restaurants, those will definitely, you know, buy a sales tax into the city, but they represent a smaller piece of the sales tax pie. You know, it's like, you know, at the moment, you know, it's like, it's hard to come by too much significant real data, but, you know, I am feeling much more comfortable that it won't be a crisis. Things will be tight. We have gone through with all the department heads, identified areas where things, you know, can be cut, moved to another fiscal year, how to limit expenses. Each department has, I believe, done their job, and we've identified a large portion of money. One, one thing we've, we'll probably take some slight benefit from is, you know, the truck that was ordered by Public Works, you know, its production was delayed. We won't even have that available to us till next fiscal year. So that's one example of money that can be moved from one year to the next. You know, we're not hiring new personnel, we're letting those positions go. You know, we've definitely identified several hundred thousand dollars of items that we think will go the way to filling that, that gap that we will have. I will already plan to have the sales tax consultant out here next month to report. And, and following having that data, we'll be looking, I, I think it said last month, I think it would be late June or July, I think right now to get the best data. It'll be July to prevent the revised budget to council, but then we'll be able to take that figure and walk right into the sale, or sorry, the budgeting for the next fiscal year coming up. Each city official will be receiving an invitation to cybersecurity training. It's been required from the last legislative session and must be complete by June 14th. And it would be an online class, so please keep an eye out for that. With regard to Public Works, the street repairs.
I'm sorry, coming from, from, from TML, from Susan Hensley, from you, who do we need to look at, make sure that we look out for?
Susan will be coordinating that. The class itself will be conducted by TML. You know, you'll be given a link that should take you to the TML site and be easy to identify. If you have any questions or trouble with that, definitely either give myself or Susan a call and we'll make sure that we can get you through that.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. With regard to Public Works, the street repairs that were started and contracted to precinct one have been completed. They've also recently completed a street sign inventory of the city and have, and they've transferred that to Excel. They also completed as a side project, something you may have seen in the downtown area, one exact, a parking stop that we've been putting out there. This has just been one area. It was well received on social media, and it's, you know, something that the Public Works will look at progressing in the city as they have time between other projects. With the police department, the RAD and citizens' police academies have been postponed until further notice, and mostly waiting on that for such activities to be able to resume. The court is working on a plan with the judge to get approval to resume full court operations in June, and they expect to have the first regular full court date on June 11th. But in, in regards to development in the city, the one big question I've probably been asked most in the last year is, when does Chick-fil-A open? Well, this week, people finally got to see the answer to that question. You know, it was May 21st, and they turned out in droves. And so if, if anyone who's, you know, attending this meeting hasn't been to Chick-fil-A, I think at this point, you know, you know, if you're, you know, in this city and haven't, you're probably in the minority. They definitely had a large traffic backup on opening day. I went over by there today and at peak lunchtime, they probably had 25 or more cars in the drive-through lane, but they were getting those cars through from that point in, in under 12 minutes. So they definitely know how to move a high volume of traffic through that area.
There's no correlation between needing to restart the court and opening Chick-fil-A and having traffic problem, is there? That's a coincidence rather than a correlation?
It's, it's, in my notes, one was just before the other. I, I'm hoping there is definitely no correlation between opening court and Chick-fil-A. I had development down as my next item at that point following the court, so.
Okay, well, there's some crazy driving with those chicken sandwiches, so.
There are definitely some people crazy for chicken. And in, in regards to the traffic out there, that is an area that the chief and I have driven around, and the chief has been in contact with TechStop related to some potential traffic issues that could occur on 105. And so that, he's gonna make sure that stays on one, on the TechStop radar. I, I do think the biggest potential traffic issue out there, you know, could be people trying to turn, whether it's turn left from the westbound side of 105 into Chick-fil-A or turning left out of Chick-fil-A to go westbound, you cross in several lanes of traffic in a way that is definitely not optimal. Wouldn't be surprised if TechStop takes some specific action at some point in the future on that. One item that, you know, has just come up on my radar, moving along on the development side, in the last couple of days, is we've been advised that the home grant homes should enter the construction phase sometime in June. I do not have more of a description of that than, than sometime in June, so I'm imagining it'll be closer to the end of the month. But we, I was advised late today that there'll be some updated documents to extend the timeline to allow a June construction start for, for one of the homes. And so they are intending to move all four of the homes on the same timeline. There were originally three that were approved. There's one more that just needs some final paperwork to be completed, but they're trying to get them all done at the same time. And one item I want to note, moving on to the city utility report, if you looked at the reports closely, you noticed that March posted a 60-day review of $2,244.13, sorry, $17 cents for 23 accounts. In April, it reported, you know, a similar amount, $2,298.25 for 34 accounts. So it's a much greater number of accounts for essentially the same dollar amount. That discrepancy, you know, is due to that one of the 23 accounts in March was reported at being almost $900 in that category, which is well above what is usually in that range. And so that has since been collected. And so, and so that was the apparent discrepancy between a changing number of the accounts, but essentially the same dollar. During this last month, Haley in the utility office completed her training for the billing software, and there were a number of features that she learned how to use that the city hall had not been putting into full use here with that, with the N code software for that system, and she'll be moving forward with that. One of those, which is timely right now, is how to input a payment plan with the customer into the system so it will automatically report forward on the bills without having to be manually adjusted. As we're returning to normal operations here at the city, you know, we had given some slack on some of the customers, you know, who may have had financial issues. And we're putting everyone who has a balance code, you know, into some sort of a payment plan that we can work with them to get everyone on track. So we do not, we're not extending them indefinite credit, but we're working with everyone individually. And with that, if you have a question for a specific department and, you know, I encourage you, go ahead.
Quick question about your payment plan, if I can jump in. Sorry, Sarah. Are we, are they making progress in paying down? I know that we had issues six years ago or so that the, the stealth payment plans were actually such that people were never catching up on their balances. Are they paying off their current as well as making progress on their past?
Yes, they're, they're required to, you know, to pay the current bill plus at least a one-sixth share of the back bill. I'm not letting, I'm not letting Haley, you know, bring anything forward to me for approval that goes beyond six months. If there is perhaps some very extreme overriding concern, I'd be happy to talk to an individual customer about that, but as of yet, nothing like that has been brought to my attention.
Okay, I think that's reasonable.
I, I noticed on the, the police department report, there was a burglary. Would that happen to be the deer that burped through Ranger's Daughter? Or is that like a car burglary?
No, that was, that was a burglary. It wasn't, it was a car burglary and also a burglary of a, of a, of a home. Well, I guess you would say an outside attachment to the home. But no, it wasn't the deer. The deer caused a whole lot of damage though, for sure.
I didn't know how you qualified the deer or not, if that was burglary, but that's okay. I'm like, you know, she, she had great insurance. They're coming back bigger, better, and better than ever. So we're looking forward to that, but her, her return. But I didn't know if that's how that was qualified. And to, we, it's, it's been brought to my attention by a lot of residents. We have a missing person here in town. How are we addressing that and working on that? I see through social media, it's being, it's being socialized, and I've seen it in The Courier online, but are we, as a, as a town, what are we doing?
What we've done is, we found a week later that the person was missing. On last Friday, we, we've gotten all the information. Last Friday, we had Tom Ball bring in their gyro. They flew over the area and we tried to see if we could find him through, through that. weren't able to do that. On Saturday morning around eight o'clock, we brought in a search team with their dogs. We searched the last place that he was seen and to, to Norvell, didn't find him at that point either. So our investigator's working on that every day. He spoke with the mother again this morning, also went to the home where he lived and, and kind of took a look at his room, the area where he lives at. And we're still talking to a few people. He left, he's done this before, but this seems to be a little bit unusual this time. The last time he was found in Conroe, but he's been found as, as far away as, near Dallas as well. So we're, we're making all those different contacts and we're keeping it up front. We've talked with a lot of other different agencies. So, yeah, we've got it, we've got it on our, on our radar upfront.
I have full confidence in your abilities. I just wanted to ask how, how we were addressing that, because I'm being asked.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. All right, great. Those are those two questions.
All right, that's all the questions, and thank you. Then I can pass it along to Michael Williams with his report.
Look, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, we have your April operations report. So this month, we had a number of district alerts. As you see them listed, I'm not gonna go through every single one of them. All, all but one were weather-related. Other than the weather-related one, we did have a concerned citizen call in the, the noise at water plant two. We had just put that plant back online and a pocket of air had made it way, its way into the booster pump. So we were able to drain the air off and get it running normally again.
Okay.
Pass that. On the next page, we have the, the April daily effluent trend. Flow for the month of April was 5.942 million gallons. Daily peak was March 22nd, 493,000 gallons, and daily average flow was 191,700 gallons. Page five, we have your, your discharge limitations and your effluent monitor report. All samples were in compliance for the month of April with 8.25 inches of rain. Below that, you can see your Below that, you can see your daily rainfall totals. And I'm going to point out, so we have the new rain gauge out there. So the reports look a little bit differently. So if you'll see the thin blue line, that's actually your daily rainfall total. And the higher the blue highlight area is an intensity. And I've tried to remove that from the report, but I've talked to the company and they said there's no way to remove that. So just want to explain that because it can be a little misleading. Page six, we have your water report. We pumped a total of 7.259 million gallons, flush total of 192,000. And so the total of 7.084 million brings us to 100% accountability. And we recorded a total of 950 connections. So the permit increase that reported last month was actually an error on Lone Star's side meant for the city of Magnolia. So I restored your original, your permit amounts on the report. So everything is recorded accurately. So we're still 89% on the permit that was increased. So we're still doing really good there. Mistakenly increased, let me correct myself. Page seven, eight, and nine are supplemental charts. Page nine is your water sold versus water treated. And so we have an 84% return to the sewer plant for re-treatment.
So it kind of seems like we still haven't, it still seems like we have an INI problem or potentially another gauge problem. And it seems like our gauge is like, you know, our gauge is on a wave. You know, you go from 25 to 40 to 50 to 60 to 70 to 80% return. It seems like it's a very convenient slope. It's not even related to how much water we pump. It's not related to the weather. It's really not related to anything. It's just sort of on its own plan. Or we have an INI problem still.
Well, I mean, yeah, so we did have a bunch of INI this month. And actually, if you go back to that rainfall chart I explained, you can see that the intensity on some of these rainfalls were, so you got a hard, fast rain, which is going to lead to a lot of infiltration. So.
But still, the numbers are not making sense. You know that, right? With two inches of rain, we have a 77% return? That's still not entirely making sense.
Yeah, I can see where you're coming from on that. About to get with Public Works and get together and investigate further.
Maybe get back to the idea of the predicted return number versus the actual return number that we were calculating at one point and see if those numbers are closer to a match.
Okay, we can take a look at that as well.
Thank you.
Does counsel have any other questions? All right, thank you all very much.
All right, Max, finish your quick quarterly investment report. Richard?
Anthony Lasky, who'll be reporting for that. I think you first got to meet him at the meeting a month ago. And so we're providing for this report for the second time tonight. So go ahead, Anthony.
Is that on mute? Anthony, you're on mute?
Yeah, I'm trying to unmute him, but I think he's.
Are you guys talking to me?
No, the other Anthony.
Oh.
Here he is. Anthony? I can hear him down in the hallway. Let me go down. He's still not coming over.
No.
Okay, let me go down there. Well, I can notice he's giving the report.
Okay. If we have to, we can bring him either to my computer, Susan's computer.
Okay, Anthony's going to come down and present from my computer. He's having some technical difficulties.
Okay, sorry about that. I don't know what's going on with my computer today. All righty, so going through your account balances, we have currently four and a half months worth of reserve for your general fund. We can see that the tax pull rates have been a lot lower over the last month or so. And we're trying to keep an eye out on that currently. Right now, I checked it, yes, I checked it actually is today. And it's at 0.22%. And after having a discussion with Richard as well as municipal accounts, we're thinking that probably if it gets to be about that 0.05, 0.1 range is when we may want to consider moving most of it to just your normal checking account at First Financial, still keeping some of the accounts open just so that way, when the rates do go back up again, we at least have that fund available. But we're going to keep a pretty good monitor of it just to make sure that if it does drop, that we don't risk losing any of that money just to be safe. So just want to keep an eye out on that. The other, also for your MEDC, we're about two years reserved in there and 10 months reserved in your utility fund. Going through on your cash flow, the only things that I can point out is back last month, we did, we communicated with your engineer and we were able to refund roughly seven of the current escrow agreements. So those have been thus completed and taken care of. And then also, in reference to your budget, Rebecca, I did go ahead and fixed that line item that you were talking about yesterday that you emailed. And so going forward, that will make sure it'll be a 12-month accrual to where, so that same amount going forward.
Right, and just so everyone knows, that's the ad blorum tax in lieu, or sorry, sales tax in lieu of ad blorum tax number. Right now, it shows that we're way behind year-to-date, whereas right now, we should be a little bit ahead. We will definitely fall behind later. But the way Kathy had it set up, it showed that our target was the entire lump sum for the 12 months, you know, right from month number one. Whereas for all of our other ones, it's basically divided by 12. So now the way Anthony set it up, we're shooting for the total number divided by 12 cumulative each month rather than the whole number. So it's just the way the rest of our accounts are set up.
Yes. And if there's anything going forward that would be more preferred on a monthly basis, I know that's something Richard and I have discussed in the past as well, to try to do it monthly instead of quarterly. Then that way, it flows a lot more easily, simply than definitely all for that, for sure. So then that way, there's a more consistent number and a more consistent transfer as well, too.
I really appreciate how quickly you've been dealing with things as they come up and tackling things. I know MEDC was confused at one point because we were talking about the May numbers. And somebody said, well, this can't be the May sales tax because it's only the third Monday in May. And somebody said, well, no, I think it's the real number. And it turns out, yes, it was the number. And it was something that we'd never seen before so early. So thank you.
You're very welcome. The only other thing that I have to point out is just you have your quarterly investment report this month. That was also sent out with your regular reports. And otherwise, that's all I have unless you have questions.
Nothing other than budgetary issues, which aren't really bookkeeping issues. The bookkeeping is sterling, the budget is nail-biting. Yeah.
Thank you for your courtesy, Anthony.
You're very welcome.
Engineers' report, Chris Rosnoski.
Good afternoon, everyone. Should have a report in front of you. I am going to switch over. I have a couple of updated pictures of the lift station project to show you from our report. I got a lot done at the end of last week. So I will go through our report. We're on the Baja Phase 1 and 2 improvements. Those are, we're closing that out with your grant administrator. So still working on that today. With the switching of the contractor and termination of one, it's gotten complicated in trying to get everyone to understand that we're working through that. The downtown waterline replacement, we'll have bids at July 14th meeting. That's later than we said at the last meeting. But once we got into addressing some of the concerns from the contractors and giving them the 30-day notice or time to bid, so it is currently advertising in the paper. It won't be until your July 14th meeting, based on how meetings land. Water plant number three improvements, we've addressed all the contracts from the torque committee. We are submitting those to the water development board for final approval this week. So we'll be getting that once we receive approval back. You're ready to advertise for bids on that one.
Chris, can you give a summary as to what the comments from the torque committee included?
The main things were some clarifications on sizing. And so what we're doing is adding some alternates in. So the original scope had, for example, a 10,000-gallon hydromantic tank. And we're going to put in an alternate bid for a 15,000-gallon and just to see if it makes sense to go ahead and get us a little bit larger now versus later. Same thing with the booster pump. And then there were some recommendations on changing out some of the gauges and placing additional gauges to help with monitoring of the performance of the cooling towers. Were the main points of it.
Okay, thanks.
So what this will do is it'll give us the flexibility. So prices come in good and, you know, 15,000-gallon tank is going to cost us a lot more. We can make that decision at that time. And also look at budget and everything else to see if we do that now. Or the original plan was as older tanks wear out, instead of replacing them in kind with the size they are, upsizing them so we can weigh out both options when we get there.
Right, I suppose if you have to do an eight later and it's much cheaper to get all of that capacity now, then you just do it as part of this one. And we have the money that we're paying for. And now that our interest rate that we're receiving is lower, then we should be spending our money sooner rather than later.
Right.
Okay.
The H unit, just spam.
The Baja Road water drainage improvement?
Yes.
Is that the MMG? Is that what you're saying? We're no longer working with them? Am I misunderstanding that?
No, no, they're still involved in helping us out. They're not, they don't have anything to do now. Right now, it's just all showing the state how, what got complicated is the work that was completed by Vortex, but not paid to Vortex. And so it's trying to show the state that yes, the city needs to get that money back because it was, the value of that work was included in the settlement agreement. But it's making that conversation, that understanding has been difficult. So MMG has provided everything they need to. So it's nothing on them. It's strictly just getting the paperwork. What was that?
They're not finished with all the work, though, right?
The only thing left, so obviously they're in the warranty period. So if there's warranty stuff that comes up, they'll be addressed. And then the corner, but the corner is not MMG. So Mike has gotten prices on that. And so I think that's moving forward as well, but a much better price than the MMG provided.
Okay, just making sure. I want to, because I went down there and was looking at the roadwork by precinct one and noticed that corner is still there and actually saw a guy from precinct one fall down into the ditch. And that ditch is dangerous. And I've said it a whole bunch of times and I'm saying it again, as well as that backstop for at the Youngs, that water goes there. I just want to continue to talk about this because I'm not hearing any updates. So that's why I.
Right, so just where that stands is so we got a price from MMG right around $25,000 to do the corner and everything else. Mike got a price from Laurel Paving to do similar work, slightly different scope, but still works for, you know, half price of what it is. So I believe that they were moving forward with that and kind of working out those details to get him going on. But it was substantially cheaper to go there.
Yeah, I just want to add that Mike and I were planning tomorrow afternoon, weather permitting, with the storms that got, to walk through that area to go over the details from Laurel Plaza.
You're walking the area to the corner and the backstop area? Or you're just looking at?
Well, we're going to, Mike will be walking me through that area with the work that Laurel was proposing and how that compares with what MMG was proposing to do. And so I can put my eyes on that area while he's explaining the work.
Got it, okay.
All right, flipping over to page two, on the lift station project. So let me share my screen. See if this works. So yeah, pictures of your report. We did receive payment number seven, the amount of 145,000 for the contractor. As of April 27th, it was 128% complete by time and only 58% by value. Since then, so the pictures you have in your report, they have installed the generator, one of the light poles, and as well as gotten the top slide poured of the lift station. So below ground work is done minus piping, mechanical, et cetera. But the structural and concrete work is pretty well complete. So still a long way to go on the project. They're not anticipating completion closer to July or August now this year, based on their current schedule. You do have liquidated damages in the contract. Be working through the city staff and the contractor to make sure that those are addressed appropriately to cover the additional costs incurred up to that time. All right, next item I have.
All right, will we get liquidated damages or will they call force majeure now?
To be determined. So we'll be working through them. You know, there's a lot of, you know, they have substantial delays and delays have not been caused by anything but themselves. So we should be able to get liquidated damages on this contract. But we're working through them and we're going to start, continue to have those conversations early so we don't hit them at the end of the project with a large lump of liquidated damages. But just, they've been put on notice months ago that they were running late. And there's liquidated damages in the contract at $500 a day. So they're well aware of it and, you know, they're just behind. But.
Right, because I'd definitely like to get this done and done well. But yeah, they're a long way behind.
They are substantially behind, especially when, you know, the original end date was March 7th. And they're not going to be complete till likely end of July, 1st of August. So we're talking of five months plus delay on a project that was not supposed to take that long. Next item I have, I'm on page three now regarding the developments. So a couple of ones to note is from the plat reviews. I'll be coming in tomorrow to sign to the plots that are ready. So a Mending Plat for Montgomery Shops and then a minor plat for DePato Development. And on your development map, you'll see where that is. That's the north slash west side of Pleasant Morgan between 1097 and Lone Star Parkway. And that's all commercial reserves, no plans at the moment, just plotting it so it can be subdivided. And then as well as Eagles Nest Minor Plat, that's a new name. So that is the Pleasant Morgan Town Home Project. So on the east slash south side of Pleasant Morgan, the townhome development that's going in. We returned those comments back earlier this month. One year warranty, nothing new to discuss. We've already talked about Lake Creek Village, section three. One I do want to discuss a little bit is the Atkins Creek 1097 TechStop study that was done. If you remember, been months ago now, TechStop had commissioned a study of Atkins Creek to determine how to address the erosion right by them and also for future expansion of town in 97. If you look in your packets toward, or end of our. If you look in your packets toward that it are end of our report, there's a couple excerpts from their study. We received confirmation from them today that they plan on going with alternate three, which is what I included in here. As well as they have an anticipated let date of January of twenty twenty one to complete the work. One thing that doesn't address that I have followed back up with them today was downstream. So this stops essentially at the curve and where the fence line stops along Terra Vista. So if you're going down ten ninety seven where the fence line goes adjacent to the creek where it ends is where the scope of this work ends. It doesn't go further down. So I've asked text out a handful of questions regarding that because the intent, or at least that we took from it was they would be looking further downstream than that. They did study it, but their recommended improvement stopped shorter than. So I've asked a handful of things as well, you know, would the city be able to at least entertain if we had enough parties, a financing agreement with text dot to include all this in the scope of work? So obviously the stuff downstream is more minor than the stuff that's being proposed here as well as what they anticipated kind of how the the structure of that agreement could look. And then also they're wanting the city's assistance and acquiring the additional right of way for this to do the structure. So again, working through the the details on it, it's relatively new, but I wanted to show you what they're proposing. Which is essentially just that first two hundred and thirty or so feet of a concrete line ditch that drops and to ultimately be a four lane with the middle median.
So you're saying ten ninety seven would be with the middle and then all of that to the north, all concrete? Am I seeing that quickly?
The what's being proposed, so what's being proposed in January twenty one is not the road widening, it's just the the drainage work. But what they looked at was their ultimate of when they expand this to be a four lane with a center median. How would that be? How would the runoff from that be handled? So again, what would be in January twenty twenty one is just on page one thirty three of your report of your packet, I should say. It's a schematic from, I could just share.
Is that the it's beyond the purple, but it's all the it's all like the pencil with the colors. I see it.
That's correct. That's correct.
Civil engineering, correct. I got it.
Correct. So that's the only thing that's being proposed by text up that they would fund today. So that's what we're working through to see if there's some options there for additional funding and or and and upping their scope of work because that doesn't address the erosion downstream. It doesn't address where it's backing up to the lots in Terra Vista, et cetera. And I know that another, a new home builder has come in and purchased those lots that back up to the creek. So he's going to be wanting pretty soon to know what's going to be left after this.
Sorry, and just to be clear, you're not talking about the you're not talking about the city participating in funding. You're just talking about getting text that to extend their funding to include a wider scope of work.
Correct.
Because the city doesn't own anything in here except for where
We only have an easement that crosses. So it's more of, you know, helping push along for the property owners to come in and help fund a solution. When we met with them, you know, months ago, that was what was proposed is their participation and coming up with a long term solution. And they were willing to participate. Obviously, no numbers or anything yet to it. It's a pretty can't take much on that. But now that text I has what they said theirs proposes, seeing that there's a way to expand that and then going down that route with the properties because you're right, the city does not own property along Atkins Creek. It's a it's on private property. It's not a city issue other than where it affects the city.
Okay.
And then the last item I have is on page five. So the water well performance test. As you recall, every twice a year, we do a performance test of your wells. It goes through your operator. And both of those are for all the wells came back. They were reviewed and everything's working as it should. So no action to be taken at this time. And that is all I have unless you have any questions.
So if that's the last
Becky, you're you're it's hard to understand.
Reports I move to accept the departmental report as presented.
She's moving to accept the departmental.
Present. Second.
It has been moved in second that we accepted.
That I'm the department.
It has been moved and seconded that we accept the departmental reports as presented. This motion's debatable, amendable requires majority vote. It is now open for discussion. All those in favor of accepting the departmental reports as presented, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion carries and I have it. The motion carries and we will accept the departmental reports as presented.
Aye.
A business on your agenda. Number seven, condition of possible action regarding request for verification or exemption information whom had over sixty disability exemptions for use in the twenty twenty notices appraisal value and twenty twenty assessment rolls.
All right. Thank you. The city's current exemptions are zero additional for homestead, fifty thousand dollars for over sixty five that affects one hundred and forty eight property owners in the city. It includes a total reduction in taxes levied by the city of twenty seven thousand nine hundred sixty two dollars and thirteen cents. And a disabled disability of seventy thousand dollar exemption that affects thirty five property owners in the city for a total of twelve thousand seven hundred and seventy nine dollars and thirty two cent reduction in the total taxes levy. Attached to the paperwork for this item, you know, is a list of current exemption amounts for regional cities and some other political entities of note in the orange box. It highlights the surrounding city exemptions in Einhardt area. Also attached is the Montgomery Assessment Role Grand Totals Reports, which contains details on total assessed valuation and various extensions. Attached are two versions of that report. One is for properties that are under protest and one is for the properties that are not under protest. So those are meant to be added together. Obviously, the properties that are under protest may be altered based on the results of those protests. We have until July first to return this item, so it doesn't have to be done tonight, but I've you know, I've received I guess I've heard no comments from city council previously that they were looking to amend these items, but it's brought to council for action here. It's available for action tonight.
There we were then. These were all passed less than two years ago and I think at that time, I think if they're still pretty current. And I don't think that they're out of date by anything.
Richard, you said we had until July what to move on this?
It's well, we or if the council wanted to make any change, that it would have to be made before July first. It's like, I don't necessarily see if there is a need for any change. If you look at the other cities that are in our area. Generally speaking, I think your extensions are for the most part more than most of them that are there. And the one you had a couple that are more such as Shenandoah and Sea of Houston. You know, their tax base is significantly different than the city of Montgomery.
We're very interesting. I'll entertain a motion if there is one.
I move to to maintain the current exemption amounts as they currently exist today. As they are, as we're in line with with our neighbors.
It has been moved and say that we accept the motion has been made that we maintain the current exemptions as they are today. This motion's debatable, amendable requires majority vote. It is now open for discussion.
Was the second by TJ Wilkerson?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
All those in favor of maintaining the current exemptions as they are to exist today, say aye.
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 Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries and we will accept the motion to maintain the current exemption amounts as they exist today. Number eight on your agenda, next item of business, consideration of possible action of the city council acting as a zoning board of adjustment regarding a twenty five foot building line variance request and set of the required thirty five foot for the proposed heritage three development along S eight twenty five west of Louisa Street intersection as submitted by Tito management.
Okay, this is the zoning board of adjustment item that was the subject of the hearing earlier tonight. Section ninety eight dash one eighty one of the zoning ordinance requires a thirty five foot building setback along major streets. The developer is asking for a ten foot variance to allow the front facade of the buildings to be set back twenty five feet from the street. In lieu of typical developments that place parking near the street, developer is requesting to move the buildings toward the street and locate the parking behind the building. This is an action item for the city council acting as the zoning board of adjustment. Considering the request as such, it needs a super majority of at least four votes in favor if it is to pass.
Can we see? Yeah, the building. Can we see the actual detail like that of the parking garage behind it?
All right. Give us just a moment.
We're waiting for that. As far as the developments to the left and right of where this is going to be, is that the same setback that we're looking at with them as well?
Okay, the the other heritage building that's down the road, the red brick building closer to Valero, that is at a thirty five foot setback for the actual building structure. If I comparison, this would be ten feet closer to the road. Does that answer your question?
Yes, yes.
So we can have a good idea. It's Heritage Place two twenty five foot then. I would not on council at that time. Just for frame of reference, does anyone here know?
Heritage Place two is twenty five feet.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm sorry, thirty five feet.
Or is so one and two are thirty five. This would be the only one that's asking for the twenty five of of the building of the same developer.
One and two have parking behind them as well, correct?
Yes.
Do.
They do.
So why is the difference with the thirds? The lot size different or?
Yes, correct. This is Jonathan. Another one of the reasons is with Heritage Place two, there was a different, I guess, review or or take on the ordinance that required a buffer between the parking and the property line. So we were five foot off there. And I think we've already gotten a variance approved to reduce the ordinance refers to a twenty five foot vegetative setback between R one and a commercial development. So with that one, we were able to get five. This one we had eleven. We got a variance for that for the parking structure. We'll do like a living wall system on that. So we are a little bit further setback from the back of that garage structure to the property line by six feet.
I've got a question. And then also additional parking?
So the rendering that's on the screen that is for a frame of reference only, it's not an actual rendering of our facility.
Do you have a rendering of the actual facility?
No, we don't have one of the parking structure yet. This is just something that is in a complex encounter right now. That is, we wanted to be able to kind of utilize that as what we will ultimately end up with. But until we kind of get the general okay that with with these kind of concepts and if we can get it approved with that, then we'll move forward with the actual architectural and you know, more renderings to show you what the product would look like.
So would it be possible to link the first of all, the first variance with the eleven foot vegetative buffer and the living wall as a screening covering the entire south portion to the the twenty five foot setback on this one with the historic look and nature of this Heritage Place three rent color rendering. You know, I sort of was joking at the the meeting that we discussed it, but obviously, once we give a variance that tied to what we intend the project to look like if something happens and you know, again, Mr. Chidam fought out by a big mattress company conglomerate who decides to build a completely different concept. The, you know, if we do, if we don't nail down the look and style, what can actually be built to something completely different? I guess part of that question is for Dave or Richard in terms of what we can do to link the two variances together and also to Jonathan in terms of you know, if we grant this, you know, I expect this building or something substantially similar to it with the historical style, the three stories, the brick pavers and the forecourt to be built. And I'd like our motion to to reflect that.
Right. I think with the action that you're going to take, and this is Dave for those who don't have a screen, but with the action that you're going to take tonight, I think you can tie a condition like that to it. Now, with that you can go back and put a, you know, an amendment on that. I'll let Alan, you know, steer me in the right direction if I get off. But I do believe that you could condition this building line variance on a particular look or aesthetic or a material, you know, of a building that's, you know, that you would want to see.
And this is Alan Davis, correct? You can add conditions to any variance. Just be as specific as you can so that, you know, when the plans do come in, the the person reviewing can you know, look at the variance, look at the conditions and is able to judge whether the plans meet what was expected.
Right.
And Becky, to answer your question for me, I don't think we'll have an issue with, I mean, if you require it to have something similar to this architectural rendering you have on the screen. This is exactly what Chris wants to put up and I don't think he's going to settle for less.
So would you like to give me some of the proper terminology that I could maybe write down so that I don't say like eyebrow windows, which turn out to be something completely different and ten times more expensive than what Mr. Chidam was intending that, you know, some of these architectural things have different meanings to engineers than they might to civilians. So why don't you give me a list of characteristics that that will get me what I want without making Mr. Chidam choke?
Well, I'll do my best, given that I'm not an architect and I probably will lessen the terms myself.
But then I'll have somebody to blame, Jonathan, it'll be perfect.
So, I mean, I think that you're going to want kind of the brick paver system in the front. It's been contemplated with like the brick planer boxes or some kind of formal landscaping in the front. We usually do have to fight text on a little bit with that because they do like to come in and maintain a lot of those trees or cut off the limbs like they did in front of the first building. You know, brick on four sides, you know, mobility is probably key between the intersections, just because I think we're trying to create some kind of corridor down 105 between, you know, Heritage Place 1, 2, and then this being 3, hopefully be able to continue further down, but those are kind of some of the particulars, I would say. And Kevin, just for you, I just, I brought up a couple of the dimensions. Heritage Place, the medical facility across the street, the depth on that was 181, and I'm getting a rough scale of about 169 to 170 on this lot, so it is shallower.
Hey Jonathan, this is Tom Cronin, I've got a question for you. So does Chris anticipate doing retail on the entire first floor? Or is that just for the rendering?
He would like to, I mean, I think the idea would be like have, you know, maybe some boutique shops or coffee shops or small little quaint restaurants, things like that. And then some of the other floors could be a series of offices, medical. He has been, you know, things have slowed down a little bit, just given the current situation we're in with tenant these spaces, so he's still talking to a lot of people. But within the last week, this kind of started to come back up, or he was gaining more interest. So I know that we always have an intent of the user that will go in here, and then whoever is the end user, sometimes does change, but the intent is to have some form of kind of retail component on the bottom and office on the second and third story.
Of making that a, an ordinance or a thing, or making that an ask of having retail on the bottom and either living space or office up top. Is that something that we could maybe institute here?
I think it's just difficult to figure out what type of user would be in this building, at least given its current state.
And I think our current ordinances don't allow for more than single one living space above because it's not cumulative zoning.
Right, so then, but we can say, okay, well, office, top and retail on the bottom.
Something similar to like what's in the, like the Woodlands Marketplace type situation?
That might be a better discussion to have with MEDC and the carrot that MEDC could have with a, an agreement.
Jonathan, what are we looking at as far as the parking behind it? It is going to be a three-story parking garage, is that the intent?
Two-story, for now, we need to be able to get to the required parking count. Like I said, it's going to be something similar to the rendering that we have on here, but this was more of just like some steel beers and beams that go up, we're going to try to decorate the backend a little bit more, having a living wall system. We want the parking structure to kind of play off of the historic feel of the building. So we don't want vast changes in what this is going to look like, but it will kind of compare to each other. Complement each other.
Well, I have to say, I mean, you know, given the lack of zoning ordinances and such that were in place when certainly the first Heritage Place building was built, you know, I'm, you know, I found the building itself to be, you know, a good addition to the area. So I'm, you know, I'm certainly not averse to where we're going with this at all. You know, I'm just, I like to nail down details, I'm that kind of person, so you know, that's certainly what I'd like to do in getting this done.
I would like to see an actual rendering of the facility as well as possible of the front and the back garage.
Sorry, Jonathan, I was jotting notes, did you say that it would be in, in a similar style or a complimentary style?
Yeah, the partner structure will be, will complement the building. And the structure that's shown on the screen is just from a building that was done in Conroe. They gave us the idea of what we can do back here, but in no means will it look like that. It's just kind of how this minimal space you have to work in will kind of lay off of this one. The only reason why we haven't been able to turn the parking structure into a color rendering is there's just a lot of money and expense that goes into the architectural portions of that to get to the rendering. So we're hoping to be able to have some form of approvals by Board of Adjustments Planning, Zoning Council for some of these variances that we need so we can move forward with those expenses. I think even the other vegetative buffer variances that we did get earlier on was certain requirements to be met on that parking structure with the living wall system and things like that. And just having some trust that those will happen, and we will have to be able to submit these plans and specs to the city for review. And so if we can get semi-specific on what y'all need to see, staff and consultants will be able to make sure that what we are submitting is exactly what y'all approve.
Right.
And if there's anything in question, we can always bring it back to y'all to make sure that it's what y'all.
Right, and Richard, nobody made any comments on this issue in our public hearing?
No, we did not have any comments on this in the public hearing.
Neighbors behind it have anything in either way?
I know Chris has talked to them a couple of times, I don't know how recent, but they didn't seem to have an issue in those initial conversations. I do know, I believe, sent out to them as well.
I would love to see it move forward, if we can consider the details that we're talking about as far as verbiage and making sure that that's, like you said, substantially similar to what we're looking at, I would definitely be excited to see that happen.
I'm sorry, Jonathan, just to get my notes right, you said brick on all four sides?
Uh, yeah, yes, ma'am.
Okay, that sounds like a lot of brick. Well, if nobody minds, then I'd like to make a motion. I move that we approve the 10-foot variance to allow the front facade of the building to be set back 25 feet from the street for Heritage Place 3, with the caveat that this building be a three-story brick facade on all four sides, contain brick paver system in front for the 25 feet, include a formal brick planner boxes in front, assuming that is acceptable to energy, obviously, we can't, we can't interfere with electricity production. Also, that this includes historical architectural features and an aesthetic and architectural relief to the front facade or an approved equal system with a complimentary or similar parking structure or approved equal system on that as well.
Second.
It is a move to second that we accept a motion of the 10-foot variance from in front of, okay, sorry, I'm right, I heard that fast, a 10-foot variance, except the 10-foot variance 35 to 25 from the front of the street on Heritage 3, with the caveat that it will be a three-story building with four sides of bricks, pavers in the front, paper boxes, historical features and aesthetics, approved equal system and approved parking equal system. Did I get everything, Councilwoman Hux?
Just that the parking structure be a complimentary style.
Be complimentary style, okay. This motion is debatable, amendable, and requires a majority vote. It is open for discussion, council.
Jonathan, did I include anything that was outlandish?
No, ma'am, I don't think so.
Okay.
You did not state the color.
Would you should be okay?
All right.
Okay, I strike that, I don't want to amend the motion.
We should go.
Counsel, are you ready for the question?
Yes, ma'am.
Right, all those in favor of the 10-foot variance in the front from 25 feet to, I'm sorry, from 35 feet to 25 feet from the street for Heritage Place 3, with the caveat that the building be a three-story building, bricks four sides, pavers in the front, paper boxes, pending energy, historical features with aesthetics approved or an approved equal system, as well as approved parking structure to be complimentary style, all of this, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The item carries, the most carries in the item will be approved, as read. Moving right along to item number five, I'm sorry, number nine. Consideration of possible action regarding reducing or waiving water impacts fees for qualifying affordable housing project, Gulf Coast Estates, Section 2, located at the end of Baja Road.
You may recall this project, it was a subject of a flag lot approval, turning three lots into four at the end of Baja Road several months ago. The developer and contractor, Walker Montgomery CDC, it's at 501 C3, they build affordable housing and assist low-income individuals with low-interest financing to purchase the homes, and they work with at-risk youth to build the homes to the Gulf Coast Trade Center in Walker County. Their full home project will be assessed impact fees, you know, as listed here. The water impact fee would be $5,008, wastewater impact fee $11,172, for a total of $16,180. Their water and sewer tap fees separate from the impact fees would be $14,860 for the project. The Texas local government code doesn't allow many exemptions for impact fees. The one I'm familiar with that they do is for affordable housing, and they could be exempted from those fees if approved by the city council. Based on the estimated valuation of the property, the four properties after construction would generate approximately $2,400 a year and add valorum taxes for the city based on $150,000 home price and the city's current tax rate for that calculation. Two of the homes have started construction permitting process, it will take roughly one year to complete. The remaining two will start construction after the first tour. Normally, we would not, you know, ask city council to consider a reduction or waiver of impact fees, especially because there's few exemptions allowed by law, but we feel this particular project might be worth a special consideration due to the affordable housing benefit created by this project. So this is not something, you know, I've brought forward to council before, so there's not been previous discussion for me to to have any basis of what council's thought is, so, but this being the first opportunity in an area where it might be worthy, you know, that's why we're bringing it to city council at this time. And so, and so to ask, would council even be willing to consider either a waiver or a reduction of the impact fee for this project?
I think it's an acceptable ask, they're 501(c)(3) nonprofit, and I appreciate, you know, their goal of teaching people trades. So I'd be fine with it.
Yeah, I echo that too as well, Becky. I think that the impact fee is something that we could certainly look at considering waiving and then keeping the wastewater.
Right, obviously, the tap fees themselves, which is the cost of us providing the service, is something that we need to keep in place. But the impact fee itself, which is future cost, I think is or future capacity cost is something we can waive.
And that was how staff was looking at it and why we thought this particular project, you know, was significantly worthy as a possibility to bring to council.
So, Richard, if we, if we do go forward, then it's not really a given, I assume, but the, the other homes, basically, we, why they have the same requests, the other three?
Well, what you, what you see here are the total amounts for what all four properties would be. So this, you know, approval of it tonight would be the one time you would have to approve it, and this would apply through all four of the homes.
Okay, just checking, okay.
This is Dave, if I could just interject one thing, I'll say that I should have made note of in here, but the impact fees are assessed at the time of the tap, and so two of the homes have taps. And the last two homes will start next year, so the other half of these impact fees wouldn't be assessed until, you know, sometime about 14 or 15 months from now.
And I'd also like to point out that this money doesn't go into our unrestricted budget. Impact fees go into a separate account essentially to be saved and only spent on projects that are specifically designated in response to growth, so like a future water tower, a future water treatment plant, that sort of thing. So this is not money that would replace lost sales tax. It's essentially money that would go into a bank account to be used maybe three or four years in the future.
Very limited.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, I just was commenting, I was like, yes, it's very, it's limited in use. There and be tied up, so I was just building upon Becky's comments, go ahead, Tom.
Okay, well, given that, I would like to make a motion that we waive the water and sewer impact fees for the qualifying affordable housing project Gulf Coast Estates, Section 2, located at the end of Baja Road.
Sorry, Tom, you cut out, are you waiving both or one or the other? Are you waiving both or are you waiving one?
Waive, waive the water and sewer impact fees for the qualifying affordable housing project Gulf Coast Estates, Section 2, located at the end of Baja Road.
Okay, thank you, it was cutting out.
Second.
Who seconded the motion?
Kevin, Kim.
Becky.
Seconded that we waive the water and sewer impact fees for the qualifying affordable housing project Gulf Coast Estates, Section 2, located at the end of Baja Road. This motion is debatable, amendable, and requires majority vote. It is now open for discussion.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead, Councilwoman Wilson.
I was going to ask, in that wave, who getting that wave, is it Walker Montgomery CDC or the Gulf Coast Trade Center?
The waiver be going to the Walker Montgomery CDC.
Yeah, the 501(c)(3).
Yeah, yeah, that, the housing project itself is the Gulf Coast Estates, Section 2. But the applicant is the Walker Montgomery CDC.
But it's not actually money changing hands, it's the lack of a bill from the city going to them.
Right.
Counsel, are you ready for the question?
Yes.
All those in favor of waiving the water and sewer impact fees for qualifying affordable housing project Gulf Coast Estates, Section 2, located at the end of Baja Road, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will waive the water and sewer impact fees for the qualifying affordable housing project Gulf Coast Estates, Section 2, located at the end of Baja Road. Next item of business on your agenda is item number 10. Consideration of possible action regarding nominee to serve the balance of the two-year term currently held by Jack Gates, May 1st, 2020 through September 3rd, 2020, nominee for the term October 1st, 2020 through September 30th, 2020, on the Montgomery County 911 Board of Managers.
Okay, this is a position that Jack Gates had formerly served until there's a recent resignation from the position with the 911 Board of Managers. He was one of two representatives appointed by the cities in Montgomery. He was one of two representatives appointed by the cities in Montgomery County. Yeah, I let some of the other city administrators in the county know that I would be willing to serve as replacements instead of being the previous city administrator. You know, in that position and, you know, so if council is willing for that, then I would be happy to do that in that position.
I was going to say, shouldn't you have asked us first?
Probably should, but you can always tell me no. Ultimately, this is not the selection of whoever the person is, this is a nomination form and, and those then ballots will circulate out to the city further.
Is there a benefit to the city for this?
You have someone plugged into the, into the nine-one-one board, you know, if, in the event that, that there is something that's pertinent to this area. Then I would be in the position to, to get that data and be responsive to it sooner than, than most people would.
And the cost?
I'm sorry?
And the cost to the city?
They meet during the, during the middle of the day in Conroe, so, you know, once a quarter it'd be, you know, probably up to two hours of my time.
I'm fine with it if you're interested.
I think from an interest point of view, it'd be worth doing on behalf of the city and then if, if I don't think the time value in the long term, then I wouldn't be interested in repeating it.
Do we need to make a motion?
Yes, please.
I move to nominate Richard Tram for the, or as a nominee for the unexpired term to run through from September thirtieth and as the regular term from October first, twenty twenty through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one.
It has been moved and seconded that we. Nominate for the unexpired term to run through, Richard Tram for the unexpired term to run through September thirty, twenty twenty, regular term to run from October first, twenty twenty through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. This motion is debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. It is now open for discussion.
Just to clarify, my, my motion is for the Montgomery County nine-one-one Board of Managers, not for any other position you might be thinking of, Richard. Not, not carte blanche to, you know, join some other professional organization.
Yeah, I hardly think I have the time to do too many more, but.
All those in favor, was there a second motion? I apologize. Yes, there was. All those in favor of nominating Richard Tram for the unexpired term to run through September thirtieth, twenty twenty, and the regular term to run October first, twenty twenty through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. For the. Board, nine-one-one Board of Managers, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no? The ayes have it, the motion carries and we will accept the nominee, Richard Tram, for the unexpired term to run through September thirtieth, twenty twenty, and a regular term to run from April first, twenty twenty through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one of the nine-one-one Board of Managers, three places, check it. All right. Next item of business on your agenda is number eleven. Consideration of possible action regarding accepting the resignation of city council member place two, John Champagne Junior, effective May thirteenth, twenty twenty.
Okay, from May thirteenth, received the attached resignation letter from John Champagne Junior, who was resigning from Montgomery City Council Place Two. You know, that, as I said, that letter is attached, the action item for council today is to accept that letter.
They're moved.
Is there a second motion? It has been. That we accept the resignation of city council. And requires majority vote. Discussion. All those in favor of accepting the resignation of city council member place two, John Champagne Junior, effective May thirteenth, twenty twenty, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no? The ayes have it, the motion carries and we will accept the resignation of city council member place two, John Champagne Junior, effective May thirteenth, twenty twenty. Next item of business on your agenda, number twelve. Consideration of possible action regarding the vacant position of city council place number two.
Okay, you know, as we just acted upon, you have the vacancy in place two. Because I received the resignation letter immediately after, you know, the last council meeting, you know, in order to give the city council the widest possible latitude of action, you know, I took it upon myself, we. We placed an announcement on the city's website about collecting applications, we also posted it on Facebook page. We received two applications for that, which I emailed out to council, you know, late this afternoon, following me sending that out, there were no additional ones received. You know, I did this without any specific advice from council because we had just had the meeting when that resignation came in. So I wasn't sure if council was going to want to act sooner or later. So this, you know, I was trying to give council the widest possible latitude. If council wanted to try to appoint a replacement on a short schedule, or if council, you know, if council wants to do something else, by all means, offer me the direction you need to give me and I will take it in a different direction. So, so this matter is put to council either, you know, for how you want to act, you know, in this matter. If you need me to do something else, just let me know.
I think we should fill it as soon as possible, but Alan, I have a question for you, one of the, is there any issue with one of the prospective candidates is running for another city council position? Does that, is there any legal issue regarding that since he has announced he is running for a position? Not the same position, but is there any conflict or anything that we should take into consideration?
Well, the, the issue is that he would. Vacate that assuming he's elected come November, once you. You know, if he's elected to the other position, he would automatically vacate the one that he would be appointed to. But. You know, there, there's nothing illegal about that, if that's what you're asking.
No, it wasn't, wasn't a legality question, it was more of a. Advantage, I guess.
And, and that's something that you have to consider, I mean. Placing people in as incumbents, if the race is contested, is, you know, something to consider because it can be considered to be an advantage to, to a person.
Okay.
I think that that would be my biggest concern with that issue. But I, I share your, Tom, your thoughts on having somebody fill the position not only for what seems to be a steady stream of city council acting as a board, as the board of adjustments, but just, you know, given the, the current health environment. That, you know, there could be a time when one or two of us or more could be unable to fulfill our duties. It seems to make sense to have all, all five positions filled. It, it seems silly to have four on purpose.
Agreed.
Randy's been around a long time, he's got a lot of experience with the city and we, we kind of need it during this time with budgeting and everything else coming up too. So it's good to see that someone that's been here a long time has actually thrown their name in the hat.
Do we want to do it tonight, or do we want to give it two more weeks and allow for more? Applications, prospective nominees, whatever, to, because I was not aware that this had been posted on the city site, but again, in all fairness, and it, it's the council's pleasure, but in all fairness. I think we should say we will appoint somebody at the next meeting.
Well, I honestly couldn't be happier with Randy Burley as an applicant. He's been involved with the nitty-gritty of the city, sorry for the rhyme. But in terms of what we have ahead of us, in terms of the difficulties with sorting out the numbers related to our budget, the water and sewer fund. You know, there isn't really anybody who likes getting down into the numbers quite the way Randy does, so I'm perfectly comfortable going forward tonight. But if I'm on my own, then obviously that won't happen.
And how long did we post the opening, Susan? How long? I'm sure that it's.
It was posted by, I believe Dave posted it and the city administrator.
Okay, and is there a timeframe that's necessary or did we meet all the criteria?
Yeah, I'm not aware of any minimum amount of timeframe, you know, the, I think the city has wide latitude in how it might seek names. And so I think we've actually done more than some areas that I'm familiar with, with, would do just by posting it publicly in that manner.
Richard is correct, there's not, not any minimum requirement.
I can't remember the exact metrics, but I want to say six hundred people or so saw it on the first day that it was posted on the city Facebook page.
So Becky, would you say that it's safe to assume that now that it's been almost two weeks that if any other possible candidates would have been interested, they probably would have applied by this point? You think?
They certainly would have been informed, or could have been informed.
All right, well, I'll go out on a limb then and nominate Randy Burley to. Fill the vacancy in place two.
It has been moved and seconded that we accept Randy Burley as the person to fill the vacancy in place. This motion is debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. It's open for discussion. All those in favor of Randy Burley filling the vacancy, first council, city council place two, say aye? All those opposed say no? The ayes have it, the motion carries, Randy Burley will fill the vacancy for city council place two. Last item agenda on, last item on your agenda, number thirteen. Consideration of possible action regarding authorizing the city administrator to be issued agreement to conduct a master drainage study of Town Creek watershed with B G E for future city council consideration.
The city staff originally received eight statements of qualification for this project. Five engineering firms were selected for interview and they were considered by a staff committee consisting of the city administrator, assistant city administrator, public works director, with the city engineer acting in advisory capacity for the staff committee. It's the staff recommendation that B G E is the best firm for the city's needs for the master drainage study of the Town Creek watershed. You know, and I'm seeking the authority from city council to negotiate an agreement in order to conduct the master drainage study of the Town Creek watershed with B G E for, and to bring that back to the city council for future approval. My goal would be to have it on the next agenda, you know, for city council. If we're unable to reach an agreement with B G E, I would move on to H R Green as the second firm. I can say for the firms that we interviewed, you know, I think we all regarded them as, you know, as qualified, it was a difficult decision. And, you know, but everyone on the committee unanimously agreed for similar reasons that B G E was the best firm with H R Green being a close second to that. The study will include a report on the hydraulics of the Anders Branch Tributary to Town Creek, including several roadway crossings. The study should deliver initial results memo documenting the Anders Branch flow results to include removal of flow restrictions and a final written report with calculations. Exhibits, models, and final recommendations, construction cost estimates, and other relevant information for the city. This information will be used, while paid out of city funds, will be used for general land office grant that the city has already been awarded approximately two point two billion dollars to design and implement drainage modifications.
Right, it's been so long that I've almost forgotten, this was related to Harvey damage?
I'm sorry, you broke up there, I couldn't hear all that.
This was related to Hurricane Harvey G L O money?
This is to identify the work for the G L O grant itself.
From Harvey or from Memorial Day Tax Day?
Memorial, this is Chris, Memorial Day Tax Day.
That's what I thought, yeah.
So if you remember, this was where the, the Montgomery County got a twenty-four million dollar grant and they had it in, distribute it between the, the cities. And so at that time, it was, they decided to base it off of population and cost of damage. And with the bridge being damaged at that time, that's what got the city such a high proportion of the money.
Right, and I think we were the ones who told the county that they had an opportunity to get that money.
Can you remind me of the amount? I'm sorry, I don't know that I saw it on here.
It's approximately two point two million dollars.
Okay. Not too shabby, thank you.
Unless anybody has anything else, I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the city administrator to negotiate an agreement to conduct a master drainage study of Town Creek watershed with B G E for future city council consideration.
It has been moved and seconded that we authorize the city administrator to negotiate an agreement to conduct a master drainage study of Town Creek watershed with B G E for future city council consideration. This motion is debatable, amendable, and requires a majority vote. It is now open for discussion. All those in favor of authorizing the city administrator to negotiate an agreement to conduct a master drainage study of Town Creek watershed for future city council considerations, say aye? Those opposed say no? The ayes have it. And we will authorize the city administrator to negotiate an agreement to conduct a master drainage study of Town Creek watershed with B G E for future city council considerations. All right, there's nothing on the executive agenda and does anyone on council have anything for council inquiry? All right, with that, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
They're moved.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we adjourn. This motion is debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no? The ayes have it, the motion carries and we will adjourn, it's exactly seven forty-eight P M. Thank you so much and everyone have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
Bye.
Thanks.